Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Madera City Council, Wednesday, May 21, 2025, at 6:00 PM. City Clerk Gonzalez.
The Madera City Council meetings are open to the public. This meeting will also be available for public viewing and participation through Zoom. Members of the public may also observe the live stream meeting on the city's website at www.madera.gov/live. Members of the public may comment on agenda items at the meeting or remotely through an electronic meeting via phone by dialing 669-900-6833. Enter ID 85395864823. Press star nine to raise your hand to comment and star six to unmute yourself to speak. Comments will also be accepted via email at citycouncilpubliccomment@madera.gov or by regular mail at 205 West Fourth Street, Madera, California, 93637. We'd also like to remind the public that Wordly is available for translation services.
Thank you for that. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gallegos.
Here.
Mayor Protem Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Zachariah.
Here.
Councilmember Montes.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Mejia.
Here.
And Councilmember Villegas.
I hear.
Thank you for that. If everybody could please stand for the invocation given by Pastor Thurman from New Life Assembly.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Let our heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you this evening as we gather here tonight. Your word tells us that all wisdom and understanding come from you. We're asking tonight, Lord, that you would just feed us and feed our council with wisdom in the decision-making process for all the agenda tonight and the things that concern our city. We ask, Lord, that there's a blessing upon our city and protection upon our city, the God that you watch over us and continue to bless our community. We thank you now for your wisdom and understanding, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. You please stand for the flag salute.
Ready? Salute.
Thank you for that, Mayor Protem Rodriguez. Moving on for the approval of the agenda. I'll bring that to my colleagues if there's any changes. Or a motion?
A motion to approve is written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the next item, City Clerk Gonzalez.
First presentation is the proclamation recognizing National Foster Care Awareness Month.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the council and myself, I would like to call Mr. and Mrs. Garcia and their children up to the podium with me, please. And I have a young lady here that is going to take my place. She says she's going to be the next mayor. Oh, this one right here. Okay, Willow, you got it. Tonight, I have the great opportunity to do a proclamation on National Foster Care and Awareness Month. This is dear to my heart because I'm a school teacher, as you know, and I was teaching first grade, my sister was teaching second grade, and we had a pair of siblings who lost their parents in a car accident, and we had no one in Madera that were foster parents that could take them. It was really hard because to put them in another city where they knew nothing but Madera was going to be very devastating. So when I hear more people stepping up to the plate and getting trained, which is a pretty drooling training to get through and become foster parents to help those in need, it's a great ooh-ha for all of you. We have Mr. and Mrs. Garcia here, who have had several foster children in their home and sit this day are still bringing them in and help raising them to be part of our community. So on National Awareness Month for Foster Care, we will raise awareness for our children and our youth in this care. National Foster Care Month acknowledges the contributions and fostering parents, family members, social work, and other professionals who support their children. Foster care advocates to build lasting relationships with abused and neglected children in the child welfare system. Mr. and Mrs. Garcia have been fostering children throughout this county of Madera for many years. So I hereby, C.C. Gallegos, Mayor of the City of Madera, and behalf of the entire City Council, I hereby proclaim this month of May, 2025, as National Foster Care Awareness from the City of Madera. Thank you so much for all you do.
I'm the talker. I'm Angela. Yes, we started going on eight years fostering. We have four biological children. They're all grown now. We have five grandkids. When our youngest was in a senior, we were like, okay, now what am I going to do? Because I stayed home my whole time and all the kids growing up. And I thought about foster care. He goes, oh, I'm a foster parent. And I was like, oh, me too. Hey, we found my new career in helping the community. And so we also, his grandparents were foster parents for 30 years with over 300 children in their home. So it was kind of given that he would be so on. This is Leia and Willow. They were fosters, but we were blessed to get to adopt them. So they're now ours. And so we're very excited. Been a lot of fun, a lot of stress, but it's all good. But I do want to say it is very challenging, but the social workers have been amazing. We have a good support system. There is a group of us in town that are talk daily, help each other out. We get that call at 2:00 in the morning and, hey, I got a baby. Oh, I got diapers. I have a onesie. I have, you know. So Madera is doing wonderful things and helping us tremendously. On a personal note, I have been on break for about, it's going on, well, today, today's 10 months exactly. I had brain surgery. I have two tumors. I had one tumor removed, the other one's still chilling in there. So I'll be one year out come July. But yesterday, I got a phone call and I'm being challenged. So I need everyone's prayers. We both need prayers. We have been asked to take a teen. I have never took in a teen. So it's a girl that needs a little bit of help. And so I said, sure, I'll try a teen. I raised four and they're all amazing, so maybe it can help this one. I don't know. So come tomorrow, we have a CFT and have a meet and greet, and by Friday, we'll have a teenager, a 16-year-old girl in our home. So, but we love what we do and giving back to the community, and it's been a blessing. But, you know, and I think C.C., she's been a great supporter and friend for many, many, many years. She's known me since I was this big. But, so, but no, but thank you guys very much for this, for this honor. Appreciate it. So that's it.
You don't want to hold the thing? Oh, she loves, she's a hugger. Can you hold the babies? Hold the babies?
And we got a center. So Angela, you go.
Lay on, bring your baby, bro. Does that sound good? Say hi. Is she?
Hello, princess. Hello, princess.
Let's put you this way there.
Well, you're going to send that to C.C.?
Okay. You love C.C.
Ready? Everyone look over here. One, two, and three. Thank you.
And our next proclamation is a proclamation recognizing Public Works Week.
All right. Well, thank you again. This is a proclamation for National Public Works Week. It is with great honor to present this proclamation recognizing Public Works. I wanted to express, well, I wanted to pass on the gratitude that one of my district residents had expressed to me. Matter of fact, by coincidence, I was just at the MCTC meeting this afternoon, and it so happens that one of the employees there, the administrative analyst, had mentioned to me how much gratitude she had for Public Works. And several weeks back, over in the corner of Westgate and Westbury, she was taking a walk, and there's some subsidence that has caused with the tree roots. Again, that happened years back when water was an issue for the city. But nevertheless, there was a puddle. She happened to slip. There was an accident. She took to action, requested for public service, and I believe within two weeks, she said Public Works was out there replacing the sidewalks, removing some trees that are no longer, that are just dead trees. But she couldn't express her gratitude anymore, and I wanted to take this opportunity to express that. So if there's someone from Public Works, would you please come up? I'd like to express this here, and I'll go ahead and read this to you, okay? So thank you again for all your service. National Public Works Week. Whereas Public Works infrastructure facilities and services are of vital importance to sustainable communities and the health, safety, and well-being of the people of Madera, and whereas such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals representing all levels of government who are responsible for operating and maintaining the water supply, wastewater systems, storm drains, sewers, streetlights, traffic signals, public fleet, public buildings, and other facilities essential to meet the needs of our residents. And whereas it is a public interest for the citizens, business owners, civic leaders, and children to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works program in their community. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that I, the Mayor Protem Jose Rodriguez, Mayor C.C. Gallegos, and the rest of the entire of the City Council do hereby proclaim May 18 to May 24 as National Public Works Week. So with that, thank you very much, and if you have any words, then this would be the appropriate time.
My name is Kimberly Greathouse. I'm the customer services representative, and on behalf of my colleagues at Public Works, thank you for acknowledging the hard work, and I truly can say that it's a wonderful team to be on. There's so much expertise and knowledge there, and everyone's always willing to give a hand where they can. So thank you, and it makes our job a whole lot more enjoyable when we know that the public expresses appreciation as well. Thank you.
Part of the team. Yeah. It's called teamwork.
That's right.
Makes you dream work. That's right.
Okay, everyone over here, please. Ready? One, two, three. Ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. City Clerk Gonzalez.
Public comment. The first 15 minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but are not required to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold the comment until that item is called. Comments on items listed as public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is opened. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusions should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time.
Thank you for that. At this time, I'll open up for public comment. Is there anybody in the chamber that would like to speak? I see none. Anybody online or on Zoom? City Clerk Gonzalez.
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you for that. I will close public comment, and with that, we will be moving on to the next item.
Section is public hearings. Item A1 is Measure T Annual Expenditure Plan, AEP, for fiscal year 2025-26.
And that will be presented by our Deputy Engineer Bitter. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Ellen Bitter, Deputy City Engineer. Start sharing. There we go. So tonight, we have the public hearing for the annual process where we present our planned expenditures using Measure T funds, and this is for the upcoming fiscal year 25-26. Just for some background, Measure T is a half-cent sales tax approved by the voters back in November of 2006. It is solely used for transportation purposes within Madera County, and the oversight is by the Madera County Transportation Authority. The current measure does sunset in March of 2027, and there was a citizens initiative brought before the voters this last November, and it was approved. So we will continue seeing Measure T on your agendas. The annual work program is adopted annually, and it includes expenditure plans presented by each of the local jurisdictions, and that would include Chowchilla and Madera County. For this year, we were allocated $4,772,810. That's the estimated revenues generated by that half-cent sales tax, and then it's distributed to the agencies based on population. Generally, our projects and programs that we plan to use the Measure T funds come out of our CIP process and/or city operating budgets. For instance, the streets operating budgets would include Measure T funds for some of their programs. The approval of the program does require a separate council action at a notice public hearing that was written into the measure. And coming out of the public outreach for the steering committee for the Measure T renewal, it was suggested and encouraged to open up that public comment period, and so we, council adopted a resolution back in October that established a 30-day public review period. So given that, we did publish the notice for this hearing in the Tribune on April 29, 2025. This table presents the figures of the middle column carryover from previous years. Those are funds that remain, that need to be spent. The new fund allocation is in that second-to-last column, and then the column on the right is the total amount for programming. You'll see fairly high balance carrying over from previous years as we are saving up our dollars for some of our bigger construction projects that are either scheduled for construction this year or even continuing out in the next couple of years. The first program is the Regional Transportation Highway Program. This is not the funds that go to MCTC for the big regional projects. These are the funds that come to the city to spend on arterials and collectors, and this year, we plan expenditures for several rehab projects. They're listed by CIP number, and then following this, you'll see a map of where those locations are. We're wrapping up the traffic study for the Almond Pine and Stadium corridors. We have initial preliminary engineering funding to work on the Howard Road storm drain issues, and then it's match funding for the D Street and South Street traffic signal. The projects that are scheduled beyond this year but are part of those funds that are being reserved is the Olive Avenue widening, Lake Street widening, Pine Street improvements from Howard to Fourth, the Cleveland Avenue widening, which this would be a match to the regional funds that have also been appropriated to the city, and the Almond Avenue extension from Pine to Stadium. So these are those larger regional projects that we're working on the preliminary engineering phases, and they're all, some are further along than others, but these are our major projects in our CIP using Measure T funds. The local transportation program is primarily for street maintenance-type projects. We do transfer $860,000 to the Streets Department for their annual budget. That covers potholes, minor patching, crack filling, signing and striping, et cetera. There is 1.7 million of those funds that had carried over. Last year, we created a project, and that's Project R99, and that will be a large project that we will do street rehab based on the streets that are recommended out of our Payment Management Plan update, which you'll hear more about later tonight. Again, there's a supplemental pot for the city. All goes to street maintenance. We are putting those on our 3R projects, R80 and R99. And then new this year, Public Works is implementing a patching program. They will manage that contract, and it will address kind of the larger payment failures. We've been calling it the 10-by-10 patching program, but it's not limited to that. It's just basically up to what would then be considered a CIP project. So this catches that middle ground. There's a component for ADA improvements, and we put this on our sidewalk projects. They help us meet our match fund requirements. And then also for this year, there has been a growth in the fund balance in that pot. So they are allocating $125,000 again to Public Works to partner with CDBG funds. So there are certain areas that CDBG funds can't be spent, so we'll have these funds to help do those sidewalk repairs that are really needed. There is $380,000 planned for expenditures on the bus shelter project and the environmental enhancement program. It is for projects that enhance the air quality, and so sidewalk projects that promote using alternative modes are eligible, and we also use these funds to match the CMAC funds for our alley paving projects. So those projects are listed here, all planned expenditures this year. So just in general, the projects that we've seen noted for Measure T, they aren't the only projects that we're going to be doing in our street program. It comes out of our CIP where there's multiple funding sources. In addition, when we're planning our projects, we do have to consider other projects, underground utilities that might need to go first before we can do our streets, so that will shift priorities occasionally. And then we try to incorporate known problem areas that either lists that are kept by engineering or Public Works and incorporate those into our projects. So again, just illustrating, these are all of our projects that are programmed for the road rehab projects, and of those, Measure T is about 46%. The other ones, the funding sources are RMRA, which is state gas tax. CHRISA is a federal-type, was a one-time funding source, but it could be used for this. And then local partnership program is also from the state gas tax program. So this is the map of the projects that are currently identified for rehab, covered by all of those projects that I listed. And again, just showing that this particular one, R99, there's more than what we showed. We partnered up with a couple of years of Measure T, so it's a one-time, $2.4 million project. Those streets are not on that map because they will come from the Payment Management Plan update, the recommendations out of that. Briefly, I just wanted to say that the final draft will be presented later this evening, and we expect that that will generate next several years of projects to be funded, not only with Measure T but other sources as well. I also wanted to cover what we might expect with the new Measure T that will take effect in 2027. They use the expenditure plan that was developed by the steering committee, so we know what the splits are going to be. So I took this year's tax projection for the county of $16 million, and then of that, the city of Madera would receive almost $5.5 million, and that is $719,000 more than we received under the current measure. So that's a little boost there. But where you'll see the biggest difference is under the local control aspect, the local streets and roads component, of the $5.5 million, $5.2 million goes directly to the local agencies for their local streets and roads. So that's over $2 million more than we're currently receiving for those types of projects. Within that local streets and roads component, there is a 10% set aside for disadvantaged areas in the city, and that's $523,000. And then transit will be receiving, would have been receiving $251,000, which is almost, it's double what they currently receive in the current measure. So that's what we have to look forward to in 2027 and going forward. With that, this is the opportunity to receive input from the public, and after that, we'd recommend adopting the resolution approving our annual expenditure plan.
All right. I'll bring it back to my colleagues for any comments and concerns. Mayor Protem Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gallegos, and again, thank you, Ellen, for expressing that. That's a big win for us, obviously, when we can have more of those local dollars utilized here with our local needs. Now, question that I have for you on the Regional Transportation Highway Program. I know that there is some funds, a program there. You mentioned this isn't the bigger projects, but nevertheless, Avenue 17, is that somewhere in our projects down the road to look at possibly considering either rehab or widening that? I mean, I look at Avenue 17, I see a lot of, I mean, if it's something bigger to staff than, would they request something directly to MCTC to put that on their bigger projects so that that may be on the horizon as well?
To the rehab component, and I know on the east side of the interchange, the road is in pretty poor shape, and we do have that on our to-be-considered list to add into some of our projects, and that's strictly to address the current condition. As to any capacity changes at the interchange, that would be a future project, and at the moment, there's none identified in any current plans going forward. There might be some changes coming with other improvements in the area, such as the casino, but they're not in our current plans right now.
Yeah, I think at some point, that'll have to be, you know, looked at carefully because you start seeing a lot of traffic count, and it is another connector between east and west of the 99. Well, I just wanted to express thank you again. Part of this council's commitment was to allow for 30 days because with those dollars that we generate from Measure T, they're brought back to the agency. At that point, this body will decide how to best utilize them based on priorities of the capital improvement plan that we have in place. So I just wanted to express that again. Thank you, Ellen, for that presentation. Thank you, Mayor Gallegos. That's all I have.
Thank you for that comment. At this time, I open up for public comment. Anybody in the chamber? City Clerk Gonzalez, anybody online or on Zoom?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you for that. I will close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve is written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you for that. Deputy Engineer Bitter, appreciate it. Next item, City Clerk Gonzalez.
Item A2, public hearing to amend the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG 2024-25 Annual Action Plan.
And that will be presented by our grant administrative, Sunega. And that will be presented by our grant administrative, Sunaga.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. And tonight I'm here for requesting a public hearing to amend the Community Development Block Grant 2024-25 Annual Action Plan. The Home Investment Partnership Program provides formula grants to states and localities that communities use to support low, moderate income individuals, families and communities to address homelessness, affordable housing challenges, aging infrastructure and economic hardships. Eligible activities include new construction or rehabilitation of owner occupied housing, homeownership assistance to home buyers, new construction or rehabilitation of rental housing, and tenant based rental assistance. On June 13th, 2024, the city was notified by HUD of its eligibility to qualify as a participating jurisdiction for the home program. The city's eligible home funds allocation is $371,064 with 92 cents. As a condition to receive these monies, the city committed to a one-time match payment in the amount of $127,935 with 8 cents. On March 5th, 2025, City Council approved the amendment of the 2019-2024 Con Plan to include home funds. At that time of that, at the time of the Con Plan amendment, the 2024-25 Annual Action Plan had not been approved by, by HUD. So therefore, staff was unable to bring both amendments forward at that time. Since then, the action plan has been approved by HUD. It does require the incorporation of home funds in the 2024-25 Action Plan. In order to execute a home agreement with HUD, the city's 2024-25 Action Plan must be amended to include these funds. HUD requires a, following a citizen participation plan to amend the annual action plan. The requirements include issuing a public notice, holding a public hearing, and providing the public 30 days to review and comment on the proposed change. The 30 day public comment period began Saturday, April 12th, 2025, and concluded on May 12th, 2025. No public comments were received. Staff is recommending council approval to open a public hearing to comply with the CPP process and amend the CDBG 2024-25 Annual Action Plan. The city included in its fiscal year 2024-25 adopted budget, a one-time match of $127,935 with 8 cents paid from the general fund. Future home allocations will not require a match. Administration of Planning and Developing the City's Home Program will be paid for by home funds. Tonight's recommendation is that City Council adopt a resolution approving the amendment to the 2024-25 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan to allocate $372,064 with 92 cents of home funds and the city contribution of $127,935 with 8 cents for a total of $500,000 toward home project development. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. Bringing it back to my colleagues for any comments or concerns. I see none. I will open it up for public comment. Anybody in the chamber have any comments? I see none. City Clerk Gonzalez, anything online or on Zoom?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you for that. I close public comment at this time and bring it back to my colleagues for a motion.
Move to approve, item A2. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item.
Item A3, Initiation of Proceedings for Annexation of the Track 24-S-02 Colette Martin Subdivision into Community Facilities District 2005-1.
And that will be presented by our senior planner, Smith.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council members. Thank you. This project represents the annexation of number 15 for the Colette Martin Residential Subdivision into the Community Facilities District. The district was originally set up with an annual assessment of $311 and has now raised to $567. The location of the subdivision can be seen on the screen in the north of the city. The map, the subdivision map was approved in 2024 for 51 residential lots. Conditions of approval required the applicant to come back and submit the CF, this CFD application. The recommendation is to hold the public hearing, adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Madera declaring its intent to annex the territory Track 24-S02, TSM 2024-04 Colette Martin Subdivision to the Community Facilities District. That's number 2005-1, public for public services and to authorize a levy of special taxes therein and set in public hearing. Annexation for number 15. Thank you. That concludes the presentation. If you have any questions.
Thank you for that. I'll bring it back to my colleagues for any questions or concerns. I see none. This time I opened up to public comment. Anybody in the chamber with any comments? I see none. Do we have anybody on Zoom or online, City Clerk Gonzalez? Thank you. I will close public comment at this time and bring it back to my colleagues.
Approve, item A3. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Great job, Senior Planner Smith, and I think you're with us at the next one. City Clerk Gonzalez.
Item A4 is Initiation of Proceedings for Annexation of the Track 24-S-01 Adele Subdivision into Community Facilities District 2005-.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Council members, again, this is annexation number 16 for the Adele subdivision. This annexation again is going into the Community Facilities District for the special taxes for public services. As you can see, the subdivision again is to the north of the city. It's on the north side of Adele Street where the Colette Martin was on the south side of Adele Street. The subdivision was for 42, a 42 residential lot subdivision. And again, the conditions of approval required the applicant to come back for the CFD application. The recommendation, like the last one, is to hold the public hearing, adopt the resolution of the City Council of the City of Madera declaring its intent to annex territory Track 24-S01, TSM 2024-02 Adele Subdivision to the Community Facilities District number 2005-1, Public Service, to authorize a levy of special taxes therein and set in public hearing. And that's for annexation number 16. Thank you. That concludes the presentation. If you have any questions.
Very well done. Thank you, Senior Planner Smith. With that, I bring it to my colleagues for any comments or questions. I see none. I open it up for public comment. Anybody in the chamber? City Clerk Gonzalez, anybody online or on Zoom?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you for that. I will close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for a motion.
Move to approve, item A4. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. And I think my colleagues are moving Housing in the City of Madera, A3 and A4. It's exciting to see that. Thank you for that. Next item, City Clerk.
Is the Consent Calendar. Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item to be removed from the consent calendar and it will be considered separately.
Thank you for that. I bring it back to my colleagues for any questions. I would like to pull B12 on the consent calendar. So at this time, I will open up for public comment. Anybody in the House? Anybody online or on Zoom?
We have none, Mayor.
Okay, I closed public comment at that time, at this time. I'm just going to talk about B12 real fast and then we'll go for a motion. Are we good with that, Shannon? Okay, very shortly on B12. I just wanted to make note that we have had a miniature pony, Bubbles, in the City of Madera for many years and she has done this community well. Kids have been excited to see her in our parades, at our events. And Bubbles was here a few years after I've gone in council and everyone here has seen her throughout the city. We do age and life comes to a point where we need to enjoy it and it's time for Bubbles to retire. And she's not just retiring, she's retiring with Officer Avila, who's been taking care of her for many years. So on behalf of the mayor and city council, we wish Bubbles a great retirement. We're going to miss her and I know this community will be sad not to see her, but understand that it's her time to enjoy life. And with that, I will take a motion for the consent calendar.
Motion to approve the consent calendar and farewell, Bubbles.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Moving on, City Clerk Gonzalez.
We have no workshops. Moving on to petitions, bids, resolutions, ordinances and agreements. Item D1, Landscape and Lighting Assessment District Zones of Benefit Engineers Report and Intention to Levy and Collect Annual Assessment for Citywide Landscape and Lighting Assessment District Zones for Benefit for Fiscal Year 2025-26.
Thank you for that. That will be presented by Administrator Analyst A.
Yes, good evening, Mayor. Let me share my screen with you.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so as Alicia said, tonight we have the first of two meetings for the 25-26 fiscal year landscape maintenance district engineers report. First, just a little bit of background on it. Beginning in 1991, as projects were approved, they were annexed into the city's LMD program. Today, there are currently 80 active zones of benefits within the city's program. Areas developed prior to the state are not subject to this assessment and assessments are collected as part of property taxes to maintain common landscape areas. Rates were set when the zones were established, as was the maximum amount that can be charged. And to exceed or raise the maximum amounts, a majority of parcels within the zone must vote in the affirmative. This is just a, just a map of all 80 zones kind of spread across the city. See, they're not necessarily evenly spaced, it's just kind of as things were developed within the city. Also of note, Zone 51 is the city's citywide zone. So something can be in Zone 51 and be pretty much anywhere in the city. The history of the engineer's report, it's prepared on an annual basis and incorporates past expenses and revenues and then projects expenses and revenues for future fiscal years. It makes recommendations on adjustments to assessments based on data provided by Finance that's populated in the city's accounting system, Munis, and estimates of upcoming expenses from both parks and finance. Just a couple of changes since the last engineer's report. The city cannot levy assessments on negative fund balances based on operational funds older than the current fiscal year, which is 24-25. Operational losses from '23, '24 and prior have been removed and this equals about $52,708 that has to be covered by the general fund. Fiscal year 24-25, which is the current fiscal year, is projected to have an additional operational loss of $33,314. And fiscal year 25-26 is projected to have an operational loss of $69,777. Fiscal year 25-26, no proposition 218 elections are being proposed this year. Success seems unlikely given past efforts and based on new information provided to staff on the proposition 218 process, we feel it's prudent to first confer with the city attorney before resuming any election attempts. We will continue to adjust assessments on a per-zone basis when permitted by individual zone covenants. What this essentially means is there's no COLA or no cost of living adjustment. Increase up to, but no higher than the base threshold amount in agreements as may be provided. We will continue to consider avenues for zone consolidation. This is still somewhat of an uphill battle because zone consolidations can cause assessments for many property owners to increase, which in the short term makes success difficult. The recommended action for tonight would be to approve the engineer's report with amendments as may be requested, authorize staff to file a 10-day public notice for public hearing and schedule a public meeting for the council session on July 2nd, 2025. And with that, I will open it up to any questions.
Thank you for that. I will bring it back to my colleagues for any questions or concerns. I don't see any. I have one and it should probably be a quick answer, I think, Ms. A. We have in Zone 21A, we have a negative of 10,000 on, it's the Home Ranch area, Phase 1. So that is not built yet, correct?
I believe Phase 1 has been built. Assessments, I have to check if there, if there are assessments, it has been built.
Assessment Phase 0 is being charged.
Then that one, there are some zones that for different reasons are not currently being assessed. Either they have a balance that is kind of, we're kind of using it up as we go. That one specifically off the top of my head, I do not recall. I think that might have been one of them, but I'd have to research that one.
I think we have our Director of Engineering is going to answer my question, I think.
I'm going to give it a shot. So back in 1991, when the citywide districts were formed, there were, there were a number of processes that were followed to set up those districts. Some of them were, when you look at the files, they were, they're like one single page that said, "We agree to go ahead and have a district." Later on, there were covenants that did not have any allowance for increases in assessments. There's probably at least four different versions of, of covenants out there that date back prior to about, I'd say, 2007, '08, something like that. So it's almost certain that this particular zone does not have the provisions for a COLA. And, and they, neither did they have the provisions for an assessment.
Perfect, okay. Thank you for that explanation.
You're welcome.
With that, I'll open up to public comment. I see no one in the chamber, online or on Zoom?
We have none, Mayor.
All right, bring it back to my colleagues for a motion.
Motion to approve is written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Administrator Analyst A. Moving on to the next item, City Clerk Gonzalez.
Item D2 is consideration of agreements with MV Public Transportation, Inc. for Transit Services Management and Operations and use, and for use of office space at the city's transit center.
Okay. And that was going to be presented by our grants administrative, Administrator Sunaga. I don't think she stepped out for a minute.
Mike, do you know where Marcel is at?
Yeah, she was, she was in here. She's on her way right now.
Okay.
She's in there in about 10 seconds.
Just those.
Nine, eight, no, I'm just kidding. Pressure. Moving on to D2, Grants Administrator Sunaga, you're on again. And while she's getting her PowerPoint, we do have MV in the back of the room. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Sure, we're going to do it in three minutes.
Okay. Good evening again, Mayor, City Council, members of the public. Tonight, I am here to bring forward a couple of agreements proposed with MV Public Transportation, Inc. for Transit Management Services and for use of office space at the city's transit center. So in summary, the current Transit Services Management and Operation Contract will reach the end of its term on June 30th, 2025. In March 2025, staff published a request for proposal to solicit a new contract for Transit Management and Operation Services. MV Public Transportation, Inc. was the only respondent. After negotiation, staff is recommending a order of a two-year contract with an optional one-year extension for Transit Management and Operation Services and a concurrent lease of the city's transit center to MV. So the procurement process consisted of the city releasing an RFP, soliciting bids to provide management and operation services on March 19th. The RFP was advertised on the city's website, published in the Madera Tribune, and posted on the city's bidding platform, Planet Bids. Responders to the RFP were requested to address the following items. Management of day-to-day operations for the city's fixed route, dialer ride, ADA, paratransit and demand response services. Maintain an adequate phone system for Madera Metro customers. Manage all transit personnel. Manage system-wide ADA compliance, ADA eligibility certification and complaints. Develop and implement driver trainings. Maintain and submit reports as required by the Federal Transit Administration, the city and other funding sources. Manage tickets, passes, fares and schedules. Support Madera Metro marketing efforts in conjunction with the city. Support Madera Metro marketing efforts in conjunction with the city. Please note, this RFP does not cover microtransit services. A contract award for a microtransit feasibility study will be presented for council consideration at the June 18 meeting. Any potential microtransit system won't be known until after the feasibility study is complete. So the procurement results were one prospective vendor was identified and emailed directly. Eighty-four vendors were notified via Planet Bids. Thirteen of those vendors downloaded the procurement documents. Nine registered as prospective vendors. One proposal was received. Staff followed up with prospective vendors through Planet Bids and by direct email. Four non-bidder responses were received through Planet Bids, none of which cited any specific deterrence to submitting a proposal for this in response to this RFP. One vendor did respond through email indicating that the decision to not submit was related to existing commitments. The cost proposal submitted with the, on behalf of MV, this table represents what that would look like. Year one represents a 15.8% increase over the current fiscal year's costs. So the second column is the, are the current costs for the contract that we are in. And we can see the difference between the current contract year and year one, increasing from 2.2 million to 2.6 million. The RFP requires the contractor to occupy, occupy space at the city's transit center. This table represents the revenue that the city will collect with having a transit operator there. MV did submit several exceptions to the agreement for consideration. After negotiations, four were agreed upon. The first is the price adjustment. MV requested consideration of a price adjustment throughout the term as a result of either city requests of material changes to services, or the city request of the change to the equipment or software required. The second request for consideration was language related to the termination for convenience. Both parties agreed to update the language to allow 60 days prior written notice and payment for the contractor's closeout. The third request was related to the fidelity bond requirement. The operator agreement was updated to allow consideration of a commercial crime policy in lieu of the bond, subject to approval by the city's risk manager. And the fourth item that was negotiated was a language related to minimum scope of limits insurance. Removal of the deductible requirements from the automobile liability coverage requirement as these are not required. Costs associated with this contract are paid for by Federal Transit Administration, State of California, and local funding annual allocations from the State of Good Repair, Low Carbon Transit Operations Program, and Local Transportation Fund monies. Tonight, staff recommendation is requesting the adoption of two resolutions. The first is approving an agreement for management and operation of Madera Transit Services with MV Public Transportation, Inc. for a two-year term beginning July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2027. And the second is approving a lease agreement with MV Public Transportation, Inc. for a two-year term beginning July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2027. And that concludes my presentation. I am available for questions. And Mayor, as you mentioned, we do have staff from MV here in council chambers. We also have Keith, we also have Keith Everidge on Zoom, who is also representing MV tonight. All right. Thank you for that. I bring it to my colleagues, Councilmember Zachariah.
Just real quick, I'm looking at the, the contract that does show for pre, pre-events, and one of them being the Fourth of July event, which I'm involved with. So what, what services would be advertised for those kind of special events as far as, is it normal routes, or are there?
So what we've done in the past is if there's, there was a, the fireworks event at the Madera Fairgrounds, and what we did was we coordinated with, I believe it was Matilda High School, if I'm correct, I believe it was Matilda High School. And we set up, we advertise in the community, and if people were able to be transported from the high school to the event and back to the high school after the event.
Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. Councilwoman Mejia.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. When you had mentioned the other respondent, that they had an existing commitment, that's on their end or our existing agreement?
No, it was on their end.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. I'm just going to make a fast comment. I'd like to thank MV for always being accommodating, especially our Jolly Holly tour that the city coordinates with you. That's a big thing that happens in our community at Christmas time. So thank you for that. Your presentation and your PowerPoint, love pictures, see faces. We get to know you a little bit better because we don't see you very often. So I have to say, whoever put it together did a great job on your report. Very detailed. Love to have more one-on-one with the council, giving us more updates on what's happening, and so that we can give feedback that we're hearing from our constituents. Anybody else? Okay, with that, I opened it up for public comment. Anybody in the House? Or if MV would like to share anything, they're welcome to come on up. Okay, with that, I'll, City Clerk Gonzalez, anything online or on Zoom?
We have none, Mayor.
All right. I'll close public comment at this time and entertain a motion from my colleagues.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Grants Administrator Zuniga, and MV for joining us. Now you can go eat dinner, or you can stay with us. We still have a lot more to do. Next item.
Item D three, Real-Time Crime Center Acquisition.
Presented by our Commander Arnold.
All right, Mayor, members of the council. If Chief was here, you'd have a big smile on his face, or you'd see that because we're very excited about this one. I'm here to present an overview of our plan to request acquiring Peregrine, a real-time crime center platform. Now, good news, bad news. It costs money. Good news, it's not our money. The initial contract will be for a five-year period. Essentially, we have a lot of disparate technology that doesn't communicate with each other, which really slows down dispatches or officers like Officer Thomas's ability to investigate crimes through using that technology. Peregrine ties all of that together. It puts it on a single screen so that that technology can be interacted with very quickly in order to get the information to the officers in the field in real time. The other problem is that different agencies within the county do not use the same report writing systems. And so if we want to know something about someone who maybe has been in Chautilla, which is really anybody that lives in our community, or the county, or maybe hasn't had an interaction with county probation, there's no database we have access to that solves that problem. We don't use the same report writing systems. But luckily, everyone in the county is switching over to, not, we're not eliminating anything, but we're all interested in using Peregrine and using the same funding source in order to acquire Peregrine. So this also solves the backend analytics problem. This purchasing process is a piggyback process. We're using an RFP that was prepared by the city of Alhambra. And again, it's being funded externally by the CCP board here in Madera. And they've agreed to fund the entire five-year contract. After that five-year contract, our plan is to take it back to the CCP board. If we find it's not solving all of our problems, to eliminate and end the contract, or to find other funding sources in order to cover it. Again, that's, that's a five-year-from-now issue to tackle. Again, I'll just say that, you know, and I'll relate it to the Walgreens shooting that we just had. If he had fled, instead of deciding to stay on scene, he would have driven past two different license plate reading technology companies' products, as well as a third citywide camera product that all have different systems that have to be logged into. Because they're law enforcement systems, many of them have two-step login processes. And essentially, it would be nearly impossible for a dispatcher to get that information and pass it off to our officers within five or even 10 minutes. And at that point, the suspect is gone. This system eliminates all of that, and they can see the vehicle or the person on all of those different systems in real time. On top of that, it also has backend software that allows for things like the processing of cell tower data and things that are really unique to this company that no other real-time crime center company has. So, so again, on behalf of the chief, we're all smiles. We're very excited about this technology. And so our recommendation is that council adopt a resolution approving the piggyback agreement from the city of Alhambra. The terms and conditions for the purchase of the real-time crime center software from Peregrine Systems for $84,000 a year for a five-year contract. With that, good for questions.
Thank you for that. Bringing it back to my colleagues for any questions or comments. I just have a comment, Commander Arnold. What I really liked about this was that that payment includes updates, upgrades, and maintenance, and that can run you some big dollars right there.
You're right.
So I was like, that was so cool to see that all in that package. So I think whoever put that together, realizing that, you know, we serve, we serve the, the public, and that they're kind of probably looking at that and that amount that's given. So thank you for that. With that, I open up to public comment. Anybody in the House? Anybody online or on Zoom? City Clerk Gonzalez?
None, Mayor.
Thank you. I will close public comment and bring it to my colleagues to entertain a motion.
Make a motion?
I'll say it.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Smiles for everyone at PD. Moving on to the next item.
Item E one is pavement management plan update.
All right. And that's going to be presented by our Assistant Engineer, Ramundo. Welcome.
Great to see you tonight.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the community. My name is Alexis Ramundo, Assistant Engineer with the city of Madera. Today, we'll be informing the council on the city's pavement management program update. Quick background, last year, we, the engineering department released a request for proposal to seek for a qualified consultant to serve with the entire street network for the city. Nichols Consulting Engineers was selected to update the pavement management system. The last time the city updated the pavement management system was back in 2016. Today, the closest consulting engineers will be presenting a PowerPoint that outlines the survey results, payment conditions, and recommended strategies to maintain and improve the city's roadway network. Staff recommendation is acceptance of the payment management program update report. Following the presentation, I will now turn it over to Sampa, who's with the consulting engineers for the presentation. And I believe he's online on Zoom.
Thank you, Alexis. Thank you, Alexis, again. Respected Mayor, City Council, good evening. My name is Sambat Kedaraseti. I'm a project pavement engineer with NCE, Nichols Consulting Engineers. We've had the privilege of helping the city of Madera Public Works set up a new pavement management program in the, in 2024. As part of this new PMP, we have surveyed the entire network. We have created a new inventory that includes arterials, collectors, and residentials. We performed a condition survey on the entire network, and using the results of that survey, we have performed budget analysis with assumptions that we discussed with the, with the city officials beforehand. Today, we will be presenting you the results of this pavement management program update. Just to give you an outline of what we will be seeing today, I will be talking about the, the new software program, Streetsaver, that, that we have installed for, for the city of Madera. We will be talking about the condition of the city's streets, a little detail about the inventory, a few examples of the city's different, city's pavements in different conditions, as well as the results of the budget analysis. To begin with, what, to answer the question, what is a pavement management program? A PMP in general tries to answer four main questions. The first one is regarding the, what does the city, the length, the width, the area, and where each of those sections are located? Then we look at what condition each of that, each of those pavement sections are in. And on each of those pavement sections, we're trying to determine what repairs are needed, and when would be optimal time to affect those pairs? And then the final question is how much funding is needed to maintain or improve the street conditions? Or what does the current funding give us? Where does that take us? All of this information is used to make cost-effective decisions, get the, get the most bang for the buck, how to stretch the city's dollar. Sorry, I'm trying to. There we go. The current, the, the city of Madera's pavement management program currently includes, we, we set up a new software called Streetsaver. Previously, the, the city had a pilot program in, in a different software called Paver, which had only arterials and collectors. This was back in 2016, and that was when the last inspections were conducted. In 2024, we switched the software from Paver to Streetsaver. The Streetsaver is the most popular, excuse me, is the most popular software in use in California cities and counties. It is used by approximately 58% of all agencies, including neighboring agencies such as Fresno City, Fresno County, Madera County. It has, it has a range of capabilities that make it really user-friendly and easy to update, easy to use, and easy to visualize data using its GIS capabilities. The Streetsavers capabilities are focused on answering three main questions in three main areas. The first one, as, as I mentioned, is the inventory, which is basically talking about the different functional classes of the cities. Where, where would the most, where the money would do the most good? Using the inventory, performing the condition surveys, and then using the condition survey data to predict future conditions. And then using all of that information together to perform budget analysis that gives us an overlook of the next of the upcoming 10 years. We are talking about pavement needs. We're talking about how, the projection capability of what, what the current funding gets us, and then being able to use that data to present it using GIS and a few examples we will see in the, in the upcoming slides. This slide is focused on what the city owns and maintains. As you can see, the different functional classes, arterials, collectors, and residentials. Ellen talked a little bit about arterials and collectors. There's a total of about 218 centerline miles that the city owns and maintains. The important part of this slide is the asset value that lives in, as part of the entire network. It's a, it's approximately $215 million. It is a significant amount of assets that the city owns, and it is important to maintain this, this asset so that it provides value and maintain it in, in a good condition. Comparing to other agencies, what other agencies own and maintain, the right column here shows the centerline miles per thousand people. It, it's basically how many centerline miles are being maintained by an agency for every thousand people that reside in that agency. So as you can see, the city of Madera is about three and a half miles for every thousand people compared to Madera County, just because of the area they, they had, they own and maintain about 10.1 centerline miles per, per thousand people. The, I keep talking about the pavement condition. The pavement condition is represented by a composite index called the pavement condition index. It is kind of a score that we assign to different pavements on a scale of zero to 100, where zero is the worst score. It is a completely failed pavement versus 100 is a newly paved street. It's in the best condition. It has no distresses. The pavement distresses, we measure on two, on three different consistent parts. One is the type, what kind of a distress, how much of a distress there is, and how bad each of that distress is. This PCI is impacted by a range of factors such as how much traffic that each street is experiencing. Traffic has a, has a big impact on, on the deterioration of the pavement, as well as climate conditions. as well as climate conditions such as temperature changes, climate changes. Does it experience any rainfall? If the rainfall happens, has it has it penetrated the asphalt and gone into cracks? And that has a adverse impact on the PCI as well. The 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 last factor that that affects the PCI is the available maintenance funding and how that how that funding has been used and where that money has gone. To give you an example of what each of these numbers means, this is Bullina's Way, a really high PC of ninety five at the time of the surveys. The the treatment here would be would be to do nothing because because the condition is great, we don't see any cracks on the surface. As time progresses, the PCI deteriorates. This is a PCI, an example of eighty one. You can see some cracks starting to show up. In a case like this, we recommend a treatment that can close up those cracks, prevent any further ingress of water, debris, or moisture in there, you know, in the form of a surface seal. This is condition category one, or the good condition category. The next slide we will see is when it has deteriorated from the good into the fair category of between fifty to seventy PCI. This is a PCI of fifty five. In the fair category, there are two main distinctions. There is a non-load versus a load related distinction. So a non-load related distinction means that the distresses that you see are mainly caused by age. So the cracks that you are seeing here, they are wider than what you saw in the previous slide. They are bigger. As you can see, there may be some vegetation in there and hence require a more a more focused treatment, a surface seal that that includes crack sealing perhaps to close up those cracks as well and prevent any further ingress in the future. This is a PCI of fifty nine, but this is a load related. This is a load related distress. As you can see, this is still in the fair condition, the condition category. But as you can see, there are some cracks right along the right along the middle crack there. You can see, we call them alligator cracks because of the way they look. They're all interconnected like the back of an alligator. These require some localized treatments in the form of digouts where we remove the material and we replace it with new material. But that's just in very localized areas, and then we cover it with a surface seal. Time passes and a street like that will eventually deteriorate in in the lack of of a treatment. And you, as you can see, with the PCF thirty two, that alligator cracking has spread throughout the entire entire pavement surface. This requires a more robust surface seal with multiple layers trying to address multiple parts of the of the pavement. This is the poor condition category. Not getting a treatment, not getting any sort of intervention at this stage will result in the pavements going into the fail condition category. This is a PCI of fourteen. At this stage, no surface seals can address anything on on the surface there because any surface seal you apply will just fail and the the distresses will just reflect. This requires a more structural intervention in the form of a full depth recycling or a surface reconstruction where we remove the entire structure and we replace it with new new asphalt. With that in mind, where does the city of Madera land? City of Madera's twenty twenty four network PCI is at sixty. So it's right in the middle of the fair condition category. This pie chart shows how that sixty, how we are reaching that that network of of sixty. It's a it's a area weighted network. So what this means is there's about twenty eight point five percent of the streets in in Madera that they're in the good or the very good condition category above seventy, while there's just about one percent of the streets that are failed in the below twenty five PCI. The this map is showing us what the surface area conditions are in different locations in in the city. This visualization helps us plan. Engineers like Alexis and Ellen trying to figure out where to put the money if we are trying to address a certain neighborhood. Like if you can see, in the in the downtown area, there is a lot of orange and red. That means there's a lot of streets there that are in the that are in the poor and fail categories versus the new subdivisions that have been accepted. There's new construction in the residential areas, which is showing up as green. These are all, these are all new streets or in fairly in in good condition. So we are. So how does Madera compare with other agencies that we that we saw before in terms of PCI? City of Madera is right in the middle in comparison with in comparison with the neighboring agencies. The 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 extremes are Elk Grove with the with the PCI of eighty and then the city of Mendota with thirty nine. The the twenty twenty two average statewide PCI is sixty five. So city of Madera is just five points below below that average. Right, the the next few slides, I'm going to be talking about the the pavement treatment strategies that the that the city has, that the city will be using in the upcoming years to address various distresses and to improve to improve pavement conditions. This graph represents the a typical life cycle of of a pavement. We start in a very good condition category near a PCI of a hundred. And as you can see, as time passes, there is an S shaped deterioration. At around PCI's of fifty to sixty, you can see a change in the slope, and then the rate of deterioration increases rapidly. And then, once you cross that hump, you you start deteriorating faster and faster compared to previous. This basically highlights the need for the city to maintain its good streets in good condition and avoid that deterioration further into poor and and fail condition categories. As as I talked about earlier, the good condition receives a surface seal like a slurry seal or with some crack sealing. As they as they fall down into in into the into the PCI between fifty to seventy, we treat that with slurry seal with some targeted digout repairs. For 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 streets that have deteriorated a little bit more, the surface seals need to be thicker and need to address the different levels of cracking. And then, once the pavement has failed and has reached the end of its life cycle, it needs a surface reconstruction. A thing to pay attention at this stage is the importance of preventative maintenance. The cost for a preventative maintenance like a slurry seal in the good category is about two dollars and fifty cents per square yard. And if you mean, if you perform that pavement, if you perform that maintenance when it's right before, when it's right about to, when it's right about to cross into a lower category, you bring the PCI up, and then you can maintain that cycle into the future by paying just about two dollars fifty cents a square yard. This results in all the residents experiencing a higher level of service and the city receiving lower complaints as well as saving money over time. Because if you do let the pavement fall into the fail condition category without addressing the distresses, it now costs about thirty dollars per square yard to perform the surface reconstruction as we spoke earlier. It's about, it's an order of magnitude more expensive than than the surface seal. And it also, but in in the meantime, while the deterioration has happening, you know, your your constituents are getting their cars dinged up. The city starts getting complaints, but it is also much more expensive at the end to fix that street and bring it up to to the earlier level. Using this analysis, using these principles in mind, the we performed, we performed different budgetary analysis, which I'm going to be talking about next. The pavement needs show that there's an approximate need of about a hundred and twenty one million dollars. This is the total cost needed to optimally repair all pavement sections in the city's inventory right now. This will result in a twenty thirty four, a ten year outlook PCI of about seventy three. But since that's not, since that's not something that's feasible right now, NCE, in conjunction with the city, we analyzed four different scenarios. The first two scenarios are analyzing the current funding level, which is about four million dollars per year. There we performed two different variations on on this funding level. There's the first, the first one was a seventy thirty split between arterials and collectors and and the residentials. The next one was a forty sixty split kind of reversing the trend where we are spending forty percent on arterials and collectors and the majority of the money on residentials. The other two scenarios were trying to see what would be the funding input needed to maintain the arterials and collectors at sixty five and then bring up the residentials to to sixty. Right now, the residentials are at fifty five. The final one is to improve the whole network as a whole, bring it from sixty to sixty five over a period of ten years. This analysis was performed with with interest rate of about four percent and over the ten year analysis period. A term I'm going to be using in the upcoming slides is going to be deferred maintenance. Deferred maintenance is basically an unfunded backlog. You can think of it as after the money you have spent that year, whatever money you have available, what is the amount of money that will that is still needed by this, by the by the network? So it's kind of a projection into the future about what is still left to do. Going back to the first scenario, the seventy thirty split with the existing with the existing funding level of four million dollars, you can see the PCI projection is at is at forty eight at in the year twenty thirty four. The deferred maintenance, the current deferred maintenance is fifty eight million dollars today. But that increases exponentially to a hundred and thirty two million dollars by the end of the analysis period. The next one with the forty sixty split results in a slightly higher PCI in twenty thirty four to fifty. It's two points higher. But as you can see, the deferred maintenance is still at the same level of about a hundred and thirty five million dollars. Previously, it was a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty two for the for the previous scenario. The next one, this is trying to, this is to figure out what is the needed money to maintain the arterials and collectors at their current PCI of sixty five and then bring up the residentials to sixty. As you can see, the PCI gradually increases over time as the residentials are improving. And this controls the deferred maintenance. It limits the deferred maintenance increase to about seventy eight million dollars at the end of the analysis period. As this, to to fund this effort, it it requires an increase of the budget to about eight point eight million dollars per year on average. The final scenario is targeting an improvement of the overall network gradually over ten years to sixty five. This one drops down your deferred maintenance even more to to about sixty four point eight million dollars. And this needs a total funding commitment of about nine point eight million dollars per year on average. This slide is a summary of the funding scenarios that we just saw, just to give a bird's eye view of the different scenarios that we saw and what the twenty thirty four result would be. Using these, each of those scenarios, this slide is showing what would be the end result of performing those different treatments, spending that different amounts of money. As you can see, currently, there's more than seventy percent of the streets are in either fair or poor condition, and about twenty eight percent is in good condition. The more money you spend going down the different scenarios, the amount of streets in the good condition keeps increasing with with the highest amount in scenario three with about with more than two thirds of the of the network in the good condition category. And we keep shrinking the fair and poor condition categories as we as we move towards the end of the analysis period. To provide the final conclusions, the regarding the scenarios in consultation with the city, the existing practice with four million dollars per year, there's a, we are recommending the forty, the seventy thirty split between the arterials and collectors and residentials that will result in a twenty thirty four PCI of forty eight. This is to ensure the arterials and collectors that most people use most days. It has the highest, you know, vehicle miles traveled. We are trying to address more of the repairs in those areas. The the third scenario would be an improvement scenario which the city can go for. That requires nine point eight million dollars per year, resulting in a network PCI improvement to sixty five gradually over the next five years. The pavement maintenance strategy that and that we would recommend is that we encourage the city to maintain good roads and good conditions and avoid reconstruction as much as we can. That means all these streets that are in PCI seventy and above, keep applying surface seals on them, keep it in that category. The regular updating and regular updating of the Street Saber software is very beneficial to the city in terms of providing a more accurate outlook. This can be in the form of constant re inspections so that the current condition is constantly updated and you get, you're getting the latest and most accurate information possible. This also includes updating the costs that you get from various bid tabs so that the future outlook, the when when you're running a scenario in the new software that's been set up, it's more accurate and helps the city plan out their treatments better. Obviously, there is a gap between the current funding and any kind of improvement that we are targeting, be be either maintaining at eight, maintaining at, you know, about sixty two or improving to sixty five. Each of them requires more money that the city currently has. These are the fundings, typical funding sources that the city might want to consider moving forward to, in addition to the available funds that the city already has. At this point, I'd like to open it up to any questions that you may have either right now or if you have any questions at at any point. This is my contact info. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for that thorough report and a very long PowerPoint presentation that we enjoyed and got a lot of information from and are knowledgeable now. So we have a question from our council member, Zachariah.
Just looking at your scenario three, I know it's it's an increase of about four million, five million a year for the budget, but if the math is correct, it's a savings of about twenty million, considering that we would go from a deferred maintenance of one thirty to sixty four, but still spending an additional four million a year. Is that about right?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And and that's still, I mean, with based on your estimates, that's still on par with costs of increases, you know, with everything going up, I guess, that's that's still in.
We have, we have used an interest rate of four percent. That is the for the for a ten year outlook, that has been the interest rate that have that we've been using since since COVID and the and the resulting price increases that we've been observing. So four percent is what we have used. And we have all, we also use the city's latest bid results from not only the city and neighboring agencies that we've worked with.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Mayor Prochim Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Rodriguez. Mr. Sampa, in on that same slide, if you can move on to the makeup of that specific scenario there, you had, there you go. So to bring it to that requires that more of the good roads have more of the the funding to keep those up at sixty two percent. Is that kind of what I'm seeing there?
So the the way, the way the Street Saber works. So the way, the way the Street Saver works in deploying the money that's been made available to the program is that it provides more and more money to bringing streets higher into that higher category. And once it's in that category, it will spend money to maintain it in that category because that's the most cost-effective approach. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yeah, somewhat. I guess what I'm looking at is in, in looking at some of our streets and especially, you know, when folks talk about, you know, fixing my roads, I think they're referring to residential roads. And I can attest to that because when I drive home, that's exactly what I see. I see a condition based on those alligator designs, I'm probably there in my road. So, you know, I know this scenario pretty much, you know, saves money, but where is that, most of that money being concentrated? I mean, I guess that's what I'm trying to get at. It seems like there's a small percentage of that going into the residential roads.
So right now, this makeup that you're seeing here, that is an overall makeup. So when it says 66%, that's 66% of the entire area. Of course, that also includes some residentials. There's more detail in the report that we can get it to you, but right now, what we're showing is this includes everything and not just arterials and collectors. There is some money that is going to residentials as well.
Yeah, and I mean, based on the pictures you showed earlier, obviously, when you have newer subdivisions and newer roads, it's best to try to get those sealed and continue sealing them so they don't kick the can down the road because most of the residentials that I see, especially in my neighborhood, looks like that can was kicked.
Right.
So, yeah, you know, I just want to emphasize that, you know, that's one of the things that I do here from constituents is always fix the roads, fix the potholes, and typically, it's those within their residence.
Right. Yeah, it is, it is definitely a difficult thing to do that selection between arterial or a collector or a residential, but that is why we rely on a mathematical approach to extend the impact of the dollar. And.
Oh, I totally understand. $4 million only goes so far.
Exactly.
You mentioned 120 million, I think, was to bring it full?
Yes, 120.7 million.
So city manager, do we have $120 million that we can? Thank you.
So just to give a little bit more context, about 59.3% of the entire city's area is in residential pool and there's about, and the rest 40% is arterials and collectors. So when this, when about 67% of the area is in good condition, that definitely includes keeping the green residentials in green.
Got it. Yeah. Thank you again, Mr. Samfet. Appreciate your presentation. And that concludes my questions.
Thank you, Mayor Prochim Rodriguez. At this time, I'd open it for public comment. Anybody in the chamber? City Clerk Gonzalez, anybody online or on Zoom?
We have none, mayor.
At this time, I closed public comment and it's just informational. So thank you for that very in-depth report. And Assistant Engineer Ramundo, thank you for being here tonight. Next item.
Item E2, informational report on agreement with California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, CAL FIRE, for fire service operations.
And that will be our Chief McCombs coming up. The famous one that was on David Mueller.
Well, good evening, mayor, members of the council. Justin McCombe, Assistant Chief for Madera City Fire Department. The item tonight I have for you is just informational. We are coming up on another one-year agreement with CAL FIRE and I plan on coming back to you in the middle of June with the final contract. So this is just an informational component to it. This, we call it a schedule agreement, which is every year to CAL FIRE in the city. It runs from July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026 for fire service operations within the city. The agreement currently is in draft and is expected to be presented to council at the June 18th meeting and thus no action is needed for tonight. So a contract overview for this upcoming agreement is expected to be for $7,45,082 for one year. The agreement covers personnel for fire stations 56, 57, and 58. Each engine would have three firefighters on each day and that's no change compared to last year. Included with that would be two battalion chiefs, no change. A little history for the city of Madera, they've been contracted with CAL FIRE since 1993. At the time, it was called Department of Forestry and Fire Protection. In 1993, there was two fire stations, 56 and 57, two frontline fire engines, one reserve fire engines, one squad, one utility and air unit, and one battalion chief with vehicle. Some more history, at that time, there was five firefighters on duty per day. The city's population in 1993 was roughly 25,000. Today, we are roughly 68,000. In 2020, the city opened a third fire station and added the personnel to Station 58. And later, the city added a second battalion chief. This is a summary of personnel and equipment at each station. You can see Station 56 on Lake Street, three firefighters and one battalion chief is, his office, or her office, excuse me, is located there. You have Engine 56 as your frontline fire engine. You have one patrol vehicle and one UTV that they typically use for the river. Station 57 off of Snore, three firefighters on per day. Engine 57 is their frontline engine. That's the city's newest fire engine that you've seen. And they have a reserve in Engine 257. And the newest station, Station 58 off Condor, three firefighters and a battalion chief located there. And that is where Truck 58 is located. And they have a reserve Engine 258. So this is just some historical context of kind of how the contracted amounts have gone. This year for the fiscal year 25, 26, there is no change to the firefighters. It's nine on duty per day with the two battalion chiefs at the amount of $7,45,082. The actual expenses is to be determined and typically, the difference in these agreements is you always, I always strive to come under as best we can. You can see there is going to be an increase and I will dive into that in the next couple of slides. So the increase in the cost is proposed because of a staff benefit rate. If you looked at last year's, in fiscal year 23, 24, we estimated it would be 6.4 million. And then last year, 24, 25, it went to 6.2. That was because there was a one-time buy-down through the PRR system that we actually saved money last year and it's, now it's going back to what it was and trending up. So in the middle, the middle bullet point, it talks about staff benefit rates increasing from the previous year's one-time buy-down. And there is also an estimated 5% increase in all cooperative agreements per year. So some of the changes that I'll talk about is we, you know, last year I spoke about the firefighter two position that we've had in the city. We've had, if you look at it statewide, that position, there's so much promotions through that rank. That is your entry-level position. We in the city have not been able to hold that position for longer than, you know, a few months. It's caused a lot of overtime issues and vacancies. And so the model statewide is you can see some of the contracted agreements are phasing out the firefighter twos for fiscal reasons and just to have a dedicated workforce that is going to be there long-term. So the overview for this upcoming year is to reclassify the three remaining firefighter twos that we have and convert them to fire apparatus engineers or FAEs, we call it. It's an increased level of service. Fire apparatus engineer, we call it company officers or a supervisor on that engine in the fire captain's absence, but they can also command incidents as an incident commander on any emergency. They can drive, which if you compare it to a firefighter two, they cannot drive. They're the lowest level individual on the fire engine. They go through training, so they're trained to pump and we hold them for a two-year commitment compared to the firefighter twos that promote and they come and go a lot more often. I talked about, you know, the firefighter twos leave vacancies and it can take up to six months to fill that position and you have to deal with the overtime and the vacancies and it's very, it creates a burden. The cost difference due to the reclassification of the three positions is roughly $62,528 for all three. And that's your bottom-end estimate and then you have longevity and stuff that you have to build into that. But it's not much of a cost difference truly. This is a staffing overview compared to last year to this year. It's the same amount of staffing except for in the highlight in the middle. It'll, last year for, or 24, 25, you had 13 engineers. And three firefighters for this year, we're looking at 16 engineers and zero firefighters. Another note, we, every, every contract has to pay in addition to the, just the firefighters on the engine, but they have to pay for the support staff that's behind the scenes. So you'll see that the city pays for one and a half communications operators, that's your 911 dispatchers that are located in Mariposa and half of an office assistant in Mariposa as well. This is our org chart. You can see the unit chief is Chris Trindad. He oversees three counties. We fall under the Madera, Mariposa, Merced Unit of CAL FIRE. He is a state-funded unit chief. The deputy chief under him is also state-funded. And then I am the division chief or assistant chief that is also state-funded. So everything in yellow is city-funded. So there's no recommendation. This is an informal item in anticipation of the agreement being brought before council on June 18th, 2025, and I will be back to present that. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, chief, for that report. I bring it back to my colleagues. Rennie, comments? Mayor Prochim Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Gagos. Chief McCombs, thank you again. So you did say that the increase was due to some buy-down of the state retirement benefits. Can you expand on that, just so that I'm clear on how that takes place?
So, yeah, there's a little bit more detail on this slide and I'll, I'll just talk as I go through it. But so if you looked at last year, there was a 19.55% buy-down of all, not only the, not necessarily the salaries, but the retirement aspect of those employees. That was across the board throughout the state. I don't know if it was specifically CAL FIRE or other bargaining units, but I can tell that it was bargaining unit eight, the CAL FIRE employees. That was, it comes through the governor's office and then it trickles down into.
Right. Yeah, costs is, the burden is spread around, right? I'm saying as far as the retirement goes, the benefit of retirement.
It's, you said spread around?
Spread through the certain state agencies and/or public agencies.
I would say that's fair, yeah.
Okay. Well, and the reason why I'm asking is because it looks like the increase would be roughly 13%. So could you see this trend happening here in the next year after year after year for the next five years?
My hopes are, is we complete this phase of the conversion and we start to plateau and we just really, we look at just the 5% each year. And that's what I've been working on is trying to see where we can kind of get some predictability of these contracts year after year. Because the increase every year could be worrisome at times, but the objective for me is to try to get it to plateau essentially.
Thank you. This question will be for our city manager. So with that increases that we have, obviously, our Measure K certainly alleviates maybe some of that. I'm not sure if any of those funds are allocated to that. But looking at the way sales tax measures are being forecasted, that could be somewhat stagnant, if not decreasing. Does that create a problem for us later for sustainability?
I'll try to respond to that a couple of different ways. One, how we've been operating since, since we opened Station 58. Station 58 or is paid for by Measure K. And so in terms of personnel, the contract with CAL FIRE, what we do is we divide it 33% and 66%. 33% for the CAL FIRE contract is paid for by Measure K. The remaining 66% is paid for by the general fund. Included in that general fund is some community facilities districts, some CFD funding, which is up. I'll say a small fraction of it. It's, I can't tell you if it's 1% or 2% off the top of my head, but, but it's mostly covered by Measure K. I mean, I apologize, by general fund. I think moving forward in this current fiscal year's budget, we are currently experiencing a decrease of sales tax relative to, or in comparison to last year. That includes Measure K, I think, maybe almost breaking even, but our general fund is decreasing the sales tax component of that. The, on the positive is that our property tax increased a little bit and that offset the decrease in sales tax. But, but it's pretty stagnant at this point. The city's general fund is stagnant is the best way I can describe it. I think as we move forward with CAL FIRE, I'm hoping, going back to something that Chief McCombs said, that the next year that the CAL FIRE contract plateaus, that would be extremely beneficial to the city. The other thing that we looked at is overtime. We're predicting now that if approved at the June 18th meeting, we would anticipate that overtime would potentially decrease moving forward because we would have less turnover in the engineer positions because it required a two-year minimum commitment. The challenge we have right now is the, the model, the billing model from CAL FIRE was altered a couple of years ago, right? Historically, and chief can correct me, the city would not be on the hook for some of the overtime when you had a vacancy or a promotion, but we've been on the hook for that. So what we've experienced is our overtime has gone up. But since we've been transitioning the firefighters out of the equation, we'll hopefully have less turnover and thereby will have less overtime. So we're not paying for two bodies even though we only have one. So, so my hope is, is that it may not plateau, hopefully it plateaus, but hopefully we're also experiencing a savings in the overtime. So hopefully, the overall contract is a bit more stable. Obviously, this is a large increase for one year. This is something that the chief, myself and Finance Director Lima have been discussing for quite some time because we were hoping it was going to come down slightly more. But we've looked at the numbers, we've talked about overtime, we've lowered our, we lowered the overtime for next fiscal year's budget to try to make it more, more dehosi-palatable for the city. But, but historically, we've been paying one-third with Measure K, two-thirds general fund.
Thank you, city manager, Ronaldo, and thank you again, Chief McCombs. I just want to highlight, you know, obviously, it's a big number. If that trend continues, obviously, then you look at what's coming into the city and what's going out. I mean, fire is very important just as police is. And I know that this council has committed to make sure that we provide public safety to our residents. But on the basis of funding, it's important that we also realize that that's what we need in order to continue to strive and provide those services. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Prochim Rodriguez. With that, I will open it up for public comment. I see none. Any onliner on Zoom?
We have none, mayor.
Thank you, City Clerk Gonzalez. I closed public comment at this time. It was informational. Thank you, Chief McCombs, for that report. Next item.
Item E3, Valley Water Collaborative Request for Contribution.
And that will be introduced by our Director of Engineering.
Thank you, mayor. I will not be presenting tonight. I'm just going to do an introduction. We have Perry Classen from the Valley Water Collaborative coming in remotely. He's going to give the presentation. We also, I can answer questions at the end of the presentation. We also have Drew. We also have Drew Martinez from the wastewater treatment plant here tonight, who can also assist. Anyway, with that, Perry, you're up.
Okay, thank you, Keith, and glad to be here tonight. Mayor and members of the council, Perry Clausen, Executive Director of Valley Water Collaborative. And I want to give you a brief overview of the program that, that we are implementing in, in Madera County. So Valley Water Collaborative is a nonprofit organization that was formed in two thousand, and it is, its main goal in, in its operation is to implement the nitrate control program that was, that was mandated by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. So I'm sure you all are hearing a lot about water, and I want to make sure before we start, you differentiate what we're doing and what's going on with the groundwater sustainability authorities and the Department of Water Resources Sigma Program, Sustainable Groundwater Management Authority. I think of them as supply. We work on quality and primarily nitrate, nitrate contamination of the groundwater aquifers in the Central Valley. And our mission as a nonprofit is to implement programs that provide access to safe drinking water for residents and in the long term, protect and enhance the water quality in our groundwater basins in the Central Valley, and then specifically with Valley Water, the Northern San Joaquin Valley. So our Board of Directors is made up of all the industry sectors that are permitted by the Regional Water Board for their waste that include nitrate. And that includes irrigated ag, cities and municipalities, small water systems, wastewater treatment systems, food processors, wineries, dairy, and poultry. So our board represents two basins at this point, Modesto-Turlock, and we are adding other basins to our organization, including Madera. And I'll explain that in a little bit of that, that expansion. So you can see on the right, the communities in the Modesto and Turlock basins that are currently participating in Valley Water Collaborative. So we have a staff, small staff. We have three part-time employees. We also use professional consulting engineers to do the science work that I'll be talking about here in a minute. You can see those listed down on the lower left-hand side, as well as we hire analytical laboratories to perform the well testing that we're required to perform. And we have Primo Brand as supplying the bottled water that we provide when a well is exceeding the nitrate standard. So the nitrate control program initiated back in twenty twenty, actually in twenty fifteen, the effort started. It was adopted by the Regional Water Board in twenty twenty-two with these primary goals that you see listed here, is to provide safe drinking water. When private domestic wells exceed the nitrate standard, drinking water standard, also to work with these dischargers to reduce the impacts of nitrate on water quality supplies, and then in long term, restore the groundwater quality that's degraded in the region. And as you can see here on this map, these are the basins, groundwater basins that carry the name of the Department of Water Resource Groundwater Basin designation. In our case in Madera, it's called the Madera Basin, even though it is obviously the city, it is the basin that extends from the base of the Sierra Nevadas to the San Joaquin River. So the red basins that you see are the highest priority. They have the highest level of nitrate contamination. And Modesto-Turlock, which is where Valley Water started, Chauchilla Basin, the Kings, Coia, and Tulley Basins. They each have separate organizations that manage their implementation of the nitrate control program. So all the dischargers in the Central Valley with nitrates had a choice. With this regulation adopted, they could either join a management zone to comply, or they could take in an individual permit approach. The vast majority of entities in the valley have chosen to join a management zone. There are a couple of municipalities with very advanced wastewater treatment plant processes that have been able to reach the criteria that the regional board set to become a individual permit holder. So the notice to comply, which is the letter we get from the water board as, as entities with permits, including Madera Wastewater Treatment Plant, and Priority One, those notices went out in twenty twenty. The Priority Two notices went out about a year and a half ago, December twenty twenty-three. And there's the third priority basins that you see in green that are still in, in advance at the, at this point. The regional board's focusing on the red and the orange areas. So Valley Water, as I mentioned, started in the Modesto-Turlock basins. We've now expanded to the five Priority Two basins that border the Modesto-Turlock basins. So these two approaches that entities are given, as, as I mentioned, you can comply with a nitrate control program as an individual entity, Pathway A, and that involves creating a report, writing a report on your discharges, having extensive information on the impact of your discharges to the groundwater basin, and then if there is impacts to a private domestic wells, providing bottled water to them on an individual basis. Pathway B is the management zone approach, where all the, the dischargers work together collectively to comply with a nitrate control program. And I'll talk a little bit about what those details are. So Valley Water currently has the basins you see listed here, or the administrative organization. I previously worked for the East San Joaquin Water Quality Coalition. This is the Irrigated Lands Program that encompasses Stanislaus, Merced, and Madera Counties. I worked with them for the last twenty-three years. And we were able to form an efficient organization with limited overhead and staffing to cover this pretty substantial area. I've taken this model, myself and others, to do the same approach in Modesto-Turlock, to do a program, perform the program as inexpensively as we can with limited amount of overhead and spreading the costs over a larger area. So as you can see, we include now the Yellow Basin, the Eastern San Joaquin Basin, which is Stockton, Stockton is a major city, Delta Mendota, which encompasses the east side, sorry, the west side along Interstate Five, Merced, and the Madera Basins. These are all administered under Valley Water Collaborative. Again, for the economies of scale, saving money in staffing, bottled water, and all the contracting and reports that are needed to comply with this program. So what we do, what we're required to do as a management zone and a groundwater basin is to collect all the groundwater nitrate data. That map you saw earlier with the red and the orange, those were based on taking the public data available on what the groundwater conditions are throughout the Central Valley. And we focus the data collection on the upper zone of the aquifer because that's where the contaminants from the surface first impact the, the aquifers. And it's also where generally private domestic wells are accessing their data. So for each of the basins, and including Madera, I'll show you in a minute, has had this analysis done by the consultants that you saw listed on the earlier slides. So this, this analysis shows us where our high nitrate levels are. And we developed these maps that are very specific to the areas that we want to target to do private domestic well testing. So the data that was collected for the Madera Basin shows actually the lowest levels of nitrate contamination in the groundwater of all the seven basins that Valley Water now manages. We create this chart you see on the right, and the, the consultants go out and, and do some surveys on the, the, the number of domestic wells, and it could be either seven point five or higher. The standard is ten milligrams per liter. And they've estimated there's about seventy-five wells in Madera Basin that are likely or probably contaminated with nitrates. So that totals about twenty-five thousand, twenty-seven thousand people, as you see in the chart. And so this heat map you see on the left in the black dots are the domestic wells that have been identified in the Madera Basin. And in the areas you see Madera in the center has a public water system outlined by blue. And at the lower southern end, the city of Fresno, those are public water systems that by state law have to provide and deliver clean water to the residences. Domestic wells are unregulated, essentially. They don't, they are not required to test their water and the quality of their water unless somebody hires a consultant to come out and do that sampling is, is unknown. And so what our program does, and we promote in these basins, is free well testing, and also if they're exceeding nitrate, free bottled water. So that is in exchange with an extension of the deadline to meet the nitrate discharge limits in the, in the participants' waste stream. So we have been able to negotiate, we, the permit holders, an extension to that deadline. In exchange, we do the, the well testing for private wells, and we provide bottled water for those recipients. So that, that is really the, the deal that we made as dischargers with the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and eventually was adopted by the State Water Resources Control Board. So eventually, we will be providing maps for the Madera Basin that look very similar to what you see here. This is the Modesto-Turlock Basin, and on the left, the number of applications that we've received for our program, a little over a thousand in those two basins. And then on the right, you can see where the red is. That typically is where the wells that we sampled are above the nitrate drinking water standard. So those individuals are now currently receiving free bottled water monthly delivered to their homes from, and paid for by Valley Water Collaborative. So the timeline of this program is very extensive. I'm not going to go into too much detail here. We started the program in February twenty twenty-five, four months ago. We are now, we submitted what's called a preliminary management zone proposal. That was a very expensive report written and prepared by our consultants. That is now finished. Now we're in the twenty-six, twenty-seven phase of the program where we're providing and advertising free well testing and the bottled water, as I described. And then in late twenty-seven, we have a management zone implementation of plan submitted due to the Regional Water Board. It's a very expensive plan, but it outlines what are each of the discharger categories, ag, dairy, food processor municipalities. What are we doing as dischargers to minimize the nitrate that enters into groundwater? Either through management of nitro, nitrogen applications in farms, management of dairy waste in lagoons in cities, on what, what are they planning to do and expecting to do in coming years to minimize their nitrate that, that goes into discharge to land? So we have a budgeting process. And again, back to the economies of scale, we have determined and developed a, a method where all of our seven basins will split evenly. The administrative costs are dues to our, our parent organization, CB Salcy, the Salinity Coalition, any of the databases we use, outreach materials, office supply, we split those amongst all seven basins. And then the items split by percentage is my time, our staff time, and, and the items that are basin-specific are charged only to those basins. So there are other, there are similar activities that are, that are, that happen, the well sampling, the bottled water that are only in a basin, that comes back to that basin budget. So in twenty twenty-four, sorry, it's a little small to read, but focus on that top number. We estimated that we needed to collect from our permit holders two hundred and twelve thousand dollars for the twenty twenty-four budget. We have collected majority of that funding and have completed our twenty-four activities, the biggest being the, the management zone proposal that we paid for through the consulting groups. So the way we take the budget, the annual budget, is we get the sectors together representing, as you see here, irrigated ag, dairy, municipality, poultry, wine, food processing, and others. And it's a very subjective negotiation that we held late last year, irrigated ag and dairy agreed to pay about sixty-eight percent of the budget. The municipalities that were around the table agreed to pay seventeen and a half percent of that budget, and poultry, one percent, very small in, in Madera County, and then wine, food processing, other, and the others are compost facilities and others, pay eleven point five percent. And so that budgeted amount for municipalities, which includes the city of Madera, was negotiated, an approach negotiated amongst those permit holders of how do we split the thirty-seven thousand dollars and change? So the decision was made to have a one thousand dollar base charge to all those that have permits in Madera County, Madera Basin, that you see listed on the left, a one thousand dollar base. And then the balance of the budget was split based on the average gallons per day in June of twenty twenty-four. So each of these permit holders have to report, including Madera, the amount of discharge of wastewater from their wastewater treatment plant that they have, that they discharge per day or treat per day. And you can see the numbers there in the middle of the column. So that ended up being with the numbers that you see for each of the permit holders. By the way, we added one other small development over in the Millerton Lake area that's going to reduce these costs slightly. There are a new development and also very low discharge, so that will be slightly adjusting these amounts for the twenty twenty-four budget. So then we talk about next year, this year actually, the twenty-five budget. We finished our big report. We are now only targeting and sampling wells in the basins. So the major cost is sampling wells, which runs about a hundred to a hundred fifty dollars per well. And then if there is an exceedance, then we're going to, we'll apply or provide bottled water to those recipients. So if you look at next year on that bottom column, we're going to go from a budget of two hundred and twelve thousand one seventy-one down to eighty-four thousand four twenty-four for the Madera Basin. It's very likely in twenty-seven that, twenty-six, sorry, that the budget will increase again because we will be paying the consultants to prepare the management zone implementation plan. So let me give you the last slide here. Some of the information since we kicked off the program at the, at the end of February. So far, we've had thirty-seven applications from residents in the Madera Basin. And we've sent thirty of those applications to the lab for sampling. The results we receive back, you can see on that bottom circle, there are exceedances, sixteen percent of the, of the residents have exceeded the nitrate standard. The next highest is DBCP exceedances. I'm sorry, my little blurb is in the middle. I'm not seeing this bottom one. I'm sorry. Anyway, you can see the percentages. We will be tracking these on a monthly basis for all of our basins to give our permit holders an idea of what, what we are seeing from exceedances and also the problems that we're finding in the local groundwater in serving the domestic wells in the Madera Basin. So that's my presentation. Appreciate the time again to be able to explain our program. That was a very fast elevator speech. There's a lot of details that I'd be more than happy to explain at another time when it's not eight o'clock in the evening and you have a long council meeting. So again, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your report, Mr. Kussen. I will bring it to my colleagues for any questions or comments. Councilmember Sacaria.
Just real quick, and just looking at the analysis, where is the uranium coming for, from in our water sampling?
Yeah, so I can explain that. What we are also doing is we were, Valley Water was able to get a grant from the Safer Fund of the State Water Resource Control Board. They came to us in twenty twenty-two, and knowing that we only sample for nitrate, they said, we will pay, the state will pay for additional contaminant sampling for constituents that have been found in the Central Valley. So we added uranium, one, two, three, TCP, EDB, Legacy Pesticide, EDB, and arsenic. And arsenic to our suite of contaminants. Uranium in this, in Modesto Basin is over forty percent of the wells showing uranium. And uranium is, comes from frankly, the Sierra Nevadas. We have, as you probably know, there's uranium mines in that area. And over the millions of years of rerouting them, the Sierra Nevadas into the Central Valley, there are deposits of uranium. Very low levels that leach into groundwater. And we are seeing those, uh, we're seeing those numbers in the results that you saw.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Mejia.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. Are there other long-term solutions that are being, uh, explored beyond bottled water?
Yes, in fact, in the management zone implementation plan, there are essentially three, three long-term solutions. And what the first is consolidation with a product, a public water system. That's practical for wells that are in the median vicinity of a public water system, even some that are encompassed by the public water system. There is, uh, we are just beginning that process in the Modesto Turlock Basin. The top of the list is the wells that are inside the public water system, but that for various regions, reasons never consolidated. The next treatment or the next option is for groups of, of commu- of a residences. To set up either a mutual water company or a community service district to, to find one well. With high quality water or drill one well with high quality water that those neighbors then share in the cost. Of, uh, producing the water and maintaining the system. The other two are, are home specific under tree, under sink treatment with a reverse osmosis. Process which removes nitrate, uh, there's some precautions to that. And, um, the other is continuing with bottled water. And the efforts we've been doing in Modesto Turlock, we've been surprised to hear back from our recipients of those options. What do you prefer? Over fifty percent say, just keep giving me bottled water. So we'll be doing those surveys in two years with our water recipients in the Madeira Basin. We'll be, and be glad to bring, bring you those results when we get to that time.
Thank you. Mayor Prochim Rodriguez.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mary Gallegos. So along the lines of, uh, Councilwoman Mejia, you know, long-term sustainable plans. I know that you mentioned water bottle, maybe consolidation, but what about like? Aquifer, I mean, I know you showed that earlier and I think we're priority two, but how are you working alongside Sigma? To try to be reaching levels of sustainability in the future?
Yeah, so our charge is to work with the GSAs and understand and identify. And we've done that in the Modesto Turlock Basin, all the recharge projects. Any place where water is entered or are replaced into the aquifers. And really this is, uh, uh, excuse me, I'm not a scientist, but this is a classic example. A solution is the dilution of pollution. Nitrate is dissolved in the water, pumping and treating is prohibitively expensive. Our only really way we're going to solve this problem is recharge. Recharge and dilution of the water that's, that's down in the groundwater contaminated and source control. A major part of the nitrate control program is each of these industry sectors have to put forward plans. Of how are they going to reduce their nitrate discharges into groundwater? So that it's a combination of recharge and, and reducing the amount of nitrate coming from all of these industry sectors.
So where, what, where would the city biggest discharge of nitrates come from? Is that from the wastewater treatment plant? Did I hear you or where, where would you see the, the majority of these, uh, nitrates being discharged?
Well, in communities in general and, and Keith can maybe answer this, but in general, the wastewater treatment plants have a process where they. Various steps of their process that they remove the waste, uh, solids and other things and nitrate. But eventually at the end of the process, there's a discharge to land involved. And that discharge to land unless it's aligned on, has the potential to discharge nitrate into the groundwater aquifer. So it's really the discharge to land that is tying in the wastewater treatment plants in the central valley.
Okay, uh, that's, that's, I'm, I'm sorry, but I think it just threw me off there how, um. You know, discharged of these nitrates through our wastewater somehow equates to bottled water to the residents here in the city. So I guess that's what kind of threw me off and maybe making that connection would help me understand this more.
Yeah, I'm sorry, let me, let me make that a little more clear. So the city of Modes- Madeira has clean water in their public water system. They are not impacted by nitrate. This program is specifically targeted to private domestic wells only. So that's the wells that are outside the city limits and excuse me, that don't have access to drinking water. Now, as far as who is causing that, where did it come from that's there now, who's to blame, if you will? We don't now have the information that had, can, can tie this contamination. For instance, to a pie that says, okay, ag, you did fifty percent, dairies, you did forty percent, cities, you did five percent. We don't have that information now. I just made up those numbers, but over time in the next five years, we are going to be developing an objective. Approach to determining what are the contributions to these groundwater aquifers of all these various entities? At this point, we don't have that information available.
Well, there is some information regarding our aquifer and where it's being depleted. Obviously, the city is not a big contributor of that depletion, so, um, yeah, and, and I get. You know, that obviously we want to provide safe drinking water for all residents and/or especially those that are more rural areas. Where you see a lot of these deposits and or discharges. I, I certainly don't see bottled water as being the solution, but I, I do understand it's a quick fix. But I hope that whatever the city enters with Valley Water Collaborative is to find sustainable. Water solutions for the future and more importantly, potable water.
I, I can possibly add to the discussion a little bit. Well, we, while we do pump clean water, the wastewater treatment plant does, uh, contribute, uh, the out. The outfall from the plant is somewhere's around ten milligrams per liter of, of, excuse me, of nitrates. So that, that's an outgrowth of, of, of the sewer waste. So we, we do have an impact, but many of the, uh, many of the contributors or the entities that are participating in this program. They don't necessarily have specific details on what their nitrate levels are. So the city of Madeira is probably, uh, uh, well ahead of others and Perry, you, you can jump in as needed, but. I understand that we have, we have the numbers and, and other entities do not. As those, uh, as time goes by, um, it's Perry's goal in the Valley Water Collaborative to get a better understanding of what those concentrations are. Uh, at the moment, the, the contribution that they're looking for is based upon volume output. Or volume from the various different, uh, entities. We know that we have a lot of water, a lot of effluent coming from the wastewater treatment plant. That's why you'll see our number at, uh, twenty two thousand dollars and others are, are lower. But as we get to understand that better, um, it's at very least my expectation that that contribution will drop. Because we're at ten and many other entities are likely to have somewhat more than ten milligrams per liter. Now, as far as the bottled water, that's, uh, that, that's part of the two pathways that the state has provided. Pathway one is the city goes it alone and provides the bottled water. We, we figure out who needs to do the bottled water, we provide that. And then we do other additional studies and then we have some other substantial costs later on down the road that we have to do to try to go ahead and mitigate. Uh, the situation further. Uh, I've come up to speed on this in the last week or so, and there doesn't, the, the, there doesn't seem to be a, uh, a choice for us. We do need to do this, we do need to pick a pathway. And this is potentially the most cost effective measure for us rather than us going it alone. In terms of the, it's a, it's a. I want to say it's a, it's a, it's an order from the state. There's the, the technical term in the report, but I can't remember it. Um, we've been told to do it. Uh, but in terms of going into the background and better knowledge of the report, Drew can probably discuss that. If you have any other specific detail, detailed questions of what that order requests of us.
So if I may also, uh, this will be my last question here. Thank you, Keith, appreciate you, uh, answering that. So in your expertise, I mean, we're required and mandated, what, what is a pathway that's, um? I, I guess, cost effective for the city, but at the same time, a way for us to deliver that service?
Yeah, I think I've gotten myself reversed. I believe it's pathway, pathway B, Perry.
Right.
Pathway A is us going it alone.
And that is the recommendation of staff is to go pathway B?
Yes.
So one of the, let me bring out one point about pathway A. And there's been several municipalities that have pursued that approach is you need to hire a consultant to write a very. Detailed analysis of your facility, the treatment processes and then the, the hard, the higher barrier is well monitoring data. For a period of time that shows you are not causing or contributing to groundwater contamination. And the only other two cities that have met that goal is Turlock. Because they have tertiary treatment that virtually removes all the nitrate and the city of closed. It also has similar, uh, discharge, but they have a, um, a long, a vast monitoring network. They have this advanced treatment. And the problem with writing this report, submitting it to the water board, that's easily in the tens of thousands of dollars. And it may get to the water board and they say, nope, not good enough. You go back to pathway B. So it really comes down to a business decision as, for the council is that do we try pathway A? Spend the money to write the report and possibly have to be turned down. Or join the, the management zone and in coming years, you can switch out of the management zone into pathway A. When your, uh, treatment is advanced enough to show that you could own cause or contribute to nitrate contamination of the groundwater.
Thank you, Perry, and thank you again, Keith. Sure, that's all I have, mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Prochim. I just have one question, A.D. Cusson, is, um, you said there's thirty seven Madeira applications for contamination. And are those in the city of Madeira, those applications?
No, we have a very detailed screening process. We have, um, a Google Earth and all these different layers. We have the city of Madeira's layer for the public water system. When somebody applies at one, two, three Main Street, it's going to pop up that you're in the city of Madeira. You can't, you're not eligible to apply for this program. If it is a rural residence outside of your district, then we will proceed with well testing. So we have no, we do not provide well testing or bottled, well, they don't have a well if they're in the city. We don't provide bottled water to anyone within a public water system.
Perfect, thank you for that answer. Um, I see no more questions. I, I will put out some public comment. City Manager Rodriguez.
Mayor, if I may, I would be remiss if I, uh, if I did not introduce Drew Martinez, who's in the audience. Council has heard his name a couple of times this evening. Drew's one of the rising stars here at the city. He's, uh, Drew's an operator at the wastewater treatment plant. He's a grade five operator, um, or I should say he has his grade five license from the state of California for wastewater treatment, which is the highest. Grade that one can receive. So, uh, Drew is, uh, besides being can just an absolutely terrific person. He's obviously extremely intelligent, so we're very fortunate to have Drew. So this is Drew Martinez.
All right. Keep for him, thank you for being here, Drew. I have to tell you, wastewater treatment was one of my exciting things when I got on council. I, I lived out the wastewater treatment, probably my first two years on council. So if I'm not out there, Council, uh, Mayor Prochim Rodriguez said if, if I'm not out there, that means everything's going good. So if you haven't seen me, things are going good. Anyone online or on Zoom, City Clerk Gonzalez?
We have none, mayor.
I close public comment at this time and bring it back to my colleagues for action. Or a motion to approve pathway B?
Motion to approve as written.
So pathway B?
Pathway B.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for your report. Next item.
Onto council member reports, announcements and future agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for the mayor and council members to make brief reports on boards, committees and other public agencies and at public events to request updates to initiate. Future agenda items and to take action on matters initiated under this section of the agenda. Under this section, the council may take action only on items specifically agendized and which meet our, which meet other requirements for action.
Thank you for that. I will start with to my right, Councilmember Montez.
I want to hear Drew sing. No, nothing to report, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sacaria.
Uh, thank you. Uh, this evening or afternoon, we had our, uh, transportation meeting. One of the things that came out, which I know is going to come on our June meeting, but I would like to maybe add a little bit more attention is to the micro transit. And maybe the city entertaining an idea of a pilot program to kind of look at, um, some, some of their ideas with regarding to transit. It seems like the common theme that's coming out of a lot of the meetings is, uh, ridership being low. And if the pilot program can maybe show, um, some alternatives to that to maybe. Reducing, uh, obviously emissions through, uh, the buses just driving around empty potentially. And, and obviously as maybe a potential, uh, savings to the city, I'd like to maybe see that as, as part of that, uh, agenda item. Thank you.
We have enough, council members are saying yes, thank you for that. Um, Councilwoman Evans.
Thank you very much, mayor. First and foremost, I want to say blessings to everyone. Times are crazy right now. I know you all know that there was a fire in the Meadows and it was number seventeen. But I really want to commend the city and all those that went out into the, um, river. And the cleanup out there, it is absolutely amazing now. I am so happy. The residents of the Meadows had been contacting me because they were worried because. The homes that we live in are manufactured homes and they go up in five minutes and some even less. But the firemen came out, they did an excellent job. But now I want to commend. The city for the cleanup that is out there. If you guys haven't gone and looked at the river, take a look and then they released water again today. So bravo, bravo, bravo. So that's my report, thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman Mejia.
Thank you, mayor. On May ninth, I had the opportunity to attend Nuyabi, which is a Misteco word that stands for, um, it means marketplace. Um, the theme this year or this edition was Mother's Day. Um, it was exciting to see that beyond, um, the, we had authentic Oaxacan food that was sold and we had, um, arts and crafts. But I also saw the revelation of a garden that's being maintained by that group of local indigenous women. So I was very happy to see that beyond the destruction that's happening at Courthouse Park. Unfortunately, we do have residents that are there that are doing volunteer work to try to keep up, um, with Courthouse Park. On May turn, May thirteenth, myself and Councilwoman Evans had the opportunity to attend the eighteenth annual Madeira County Law Enforcement Memorial. Which honored the, um, men and women that sacrificed, um, their lives in the line of duty. I was very happy to be there, it was such a great ceremony. Today, um, Councilman Villegas and I attended the Madeira Technical Exploration Center. Where we volunteered to, uh, be, uh, panelists judging the graduate profile elements that were presented by the students from different middle schools. And I was just happy to see all of the students that were excited to present and getting ready to fulfill this graduation requirement. Um, this Friday, May twenty third, we're going to have the first Madeira Street Eats. This will be like the Madeira Eats that the city of Madeira puts on, um, but it, this one's, um, going to be a little different. It's at Courthouse Park, it starts at five P M. There's going to be live music, food, community, they're going to have a mariachi there. So very excited to be there at Courthouse Park on Friday. And that's my report, thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Prochim Rodriguez.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mary Gallegos. On April twenty ninth, I had the privilege and honor to be appointed to the, um. The San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District. I will now sit on that board, um, advocating and sitting at the table for air quality within our, um, San Joaquin Valley. I had an opportunity to see our esteemed Councilmember Sacaria there as he's part of the, uh, uh, the San Joaquin Valley, um. Special City Selection Committee. So thank you again for your, for your support. I look forward to again advocating for valley quality air needs here in our valley. On May 11th, the Greater Madera Kiwanis hosted its Mother's Day Run at Woodward Park. This is where a lot of folks from around the county of Fresno, Madera come and run. Obviously, that's one of our bigger fundraiser events that we have. But I also want to, you know, just shed some light on this next up and coming fundraiser that we also host alongside the Evening Lions and Madera Rotary, which is our fireworks spectacular that's bound to happen on July 4th. Again, we've had two years of successful just folks getting out there, bringing their lawn chairs and a lot of good contributions from a lot of good agencies. So we're looking forward to have another exciting year and anyone that's looking to donate and contribute, we're now open. You can talk to Rowley or myself and we'll certainly get that going. So with that, Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you for your report. Councilmember Viegas.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, like the Councilwoman Mejia was saying, I was able to attend Madera Technical Exploration Center Monday in the morning and the section in the afternoon and also yesterday too and today. So I was volunteer for all three days. So that's my report.
Thank you for that. And I just have a few things. We had a neighborhood watch last night at the Madera Apartments. Well attended, probably over 50 to 60 people that were there. Thank you, Madera PD, for doing that. We had an Olive event. It's our annual 10 year anniversary that's happened. It was exciting. I first got on council and it had been running for about a year or so. Dan Foss is chief now in another city, but still comes back. Is still the president of that organization and keeping it up and running. We had a big tree go down on Main Berry and I can tell you that our Public Works team was out there, took care of it, cut it, finished cutting it down, shredded it and all cleaned up before I got home. I saw nothing, but I saw all the action happening on my ring camera. So thank you for that hard work. And all our employees that always do well for our residents and can, and continue to keep that service level at a high level here in the city of Madera. With that, I will turn it over to our attorney for closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. We have three items for closed session this evening. Item G1 is Conference Legal Counsel Anticipate Litigation. It's deciding whether to initiate litigation pursuant to paragraph four subdivision D of Government Code Section 54956.9. Item G2 is Conference Labor Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. The agency designated representatives are Arnold Rodriguez, Wendy Silva, Michael Lima, and Shay Johnson. The employee organizations are the Madera Affiliated City Employees Association, Madera Police Officers Association, Mid Management Employment Group, and Law Enforcement Mid Management Employment Group. Item G3 is Conference Labor Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. The agency designated representatives are Arnold Rodriguez and Shay Johnson. The unrepresented positions are Police Chief, Director of Parks and Community Services, City Engineer, Director of Human Resources, Director of Information Technology, Chief Building Official Planning Manager, Director of Financial Services, Public Work Cooperation Director, and Director of Community Development. Thank you.
At this time, I'd open up for public comment. I see none, anything on Zoom or online?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you for that. I close public comment at this time and we will move into closed session. If you will not return, thank you for joining us tonight, everyone.
Close session and I will turn it over to our attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you, everyone. We will see you Wednesday, June 18, 2025. At this time, I adjourn the meeting at 9:36. Have a good evening. Thank you.